Good evening, everybody. We're going to get started here in just a minute if you want to go ahead and take seats. Okay, welcome. Thank you guys for being here tonight. Welcome to District 9 School Board Candidate Debate. I want to acknowledge our candidates, Dr. Steve Highlander and DeAndre Anderson. Thank you for being here. And our moderator, Marcus Perez. Principal Cobb, I'm not sure if you're out here right now. Thank you for having us tonight. We appreciate you hosting. We're one of the co-hosts at Chattanooga 2.0 and our partners at the Urban League of Greater Chattanooga and the Hamilton County Education Association as well. So the format tonight is going to be a brief introduction from each candidate. Then there are five set questions that are being asked at every debate to every candidate. And then there will be time for audience Q and A. So we're asking you to write your questions on the note cards that you got when you came in. If you need one, just raise your hand and our staff will come around and get one to you. And they'll be floating and picking those up. So just hold them up, pass them into the row and we'll get those. And Marcus will also do a final call at one point. And then we'll work through those audience questions for as long as we have time. But one of you, Michael, has everyone's time. And so if there are any questions that we don't have time to ask, those will be sent to the candidates written tomorrow and they'll have an opportunity to respond in written form and we will post those on our website and share that out as well. So two dates to make sure you have in your datebook. August 2nd is when you need to go vote for one of these gentlemen. And July 3rd is the voter registration deadline. I want to take a moment right now to address the rather vibrant public conversation that's been ignited over the last few days around the issues of segregated schools with high concentrations of poverty in Hamilton County. There have been a lot of opinions shared opposing the concept of forced busing as a solution to desegregate schools and we agree with them. UNIFIA shares that position and does not advocate for forced busing. Data, research, and most importantly, this community's lived history and experience all prove that it doesn't work. If you read the Apex Project Report, which is available conveniently at apexprojectreport.com, you'll find there's no reference to forced busing. What you will find are examples of policy solutions that have been successful in other towns to break up concentrated poverty in their schools. We want to be clear that UNIFIA's role is not to prescribe solutions. Our role is to facilitate community involvement and driving positive change for our schools and students. Now, there is a debate question that will be asked of every candidate at every debate that asks where candidates stand on the issue of desegregating schools and potential solutions that they would support. This question is being asked on the premise that ending segregation was a priority identified by the community through the input process of the Apex Project. There are some who say that the 4,000 community members' voices reflected in the Apex Project's priorities aren't sufficient to represent our diverse county. And while we were certainly intentional in ensuring diversity of voices, we're the first to agree that 4,000 is not enough. There are 350,000 more people in this county who have an opinion on how to improve public schools and we want to hear them. Tonight, I'm personally inviting each of you to be part of the solution. There's a team of community members and leaders already focused on creating an action plan around desegregating our schools. All perspectives are both necessary and welcome. And they're necessary to create a plan that's both effective and sustainable. We hope yours will be included in that. You can speak with one of our staff members at the end of tonight's debate. They'll be up front. Ask questions, find out what's going on, find out how you can get involved. And sign up, we have sign up forms right there on the front table. Thank you again for being here tonight. You showed up because you care about our schools and about our children. We look forward to driving this admittedly deeply uncomfortable conversation forward with you because it's a crucially important conversation too. We look forward to working with you to ensure a brilliant future for every child in Hamilton County. Thank you, and I'm going to hand it over to our moderator. And we have one mic, so it's going to be getting asked back and forth a lot.
Thank you, good evening. Once again, my name is Marcus Perez. I'll be moderating this evening. Gentlemen, Mr. Highlander, Mr. Anderson, just to let you both know, at any point in the line of questioning that I have, if there's anything that's unclear or I need to repeat myself, please feel free to let me know. As noted a moment ago, we are going to allot each one of you four minutes to talk about yourselves, talk about your platform a little bit, and to tell the audience members where your stance is. Just a brief overview of who you are as a candidate. And DeAndre, if you would start that one, then we'll hand the mic over to Mr. Highlander.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so thankful for all of you coming out today to hear me and my component, Mr. Steve Highlander, speak. Before I get started, I want to share a quote. "We all know education more than anything else. It improves our chances of building a better life." Nelson Mandela. The reason I decided to run is because last year I sat on the board as a student representative and I decided to fall in love with something that I was soon to realize that that was my passion, was speaking for students, speaking for teachers, and giving people a voice who feel voiceless. And I thought it was going to end last year. I thought once I graduated from high school, that was all over. I wasn't going to have a chance to do this because who knows where my life was going to take me from four years from that particular moment. I went off to the military. I went through basic training in AIT. I graduated, came back home for a couple of months, and then I started school in January. Once I started school in January, I realized that I didn't really too much care for the campus and I found out that, you know, District 9's seat was open for reelection. And I was thinking, I kind of want to, I kind of want to do it, you know? You know, stop thinking about the stereotypical like, you have to go to college, you have to go away, you can't stay at home. Just, I was like, you know what, I'm going to do it. So I came home on the Easter break and I registered and got my signatures and next thing you know, I was verified to run. And I thought on it, I prayed on it. I was like, God, is this really what you want me to do? Is this really what you want me to indulge myself in at such a young age? And I could not shake it. And that's because I knew that that was what I needed to do. So here I am today, wanting to represent District 9 and to represent the students in District 9. I want to raise more, raise voice for students and teachers. I want to allow them a chance to be able to have more of an input in what's going on in their careers. And I want to be able to be that representative for you all. So I'm so thankful for y'all for coming out tonight. And I just hope leaving here today, you'll do one thing. Think big and vote DeAndre August 2nd.
Thank you, DeAndre. I'm Steve Highlander. I've served three and a half years on the school board and my peers have elected me as the chairman of the school board the last two years. And I'm thankful for that. I spent 45 years in education. I started at Ullwa High School, my very beginning, 1972. I served at Ullwa, at Central, and at Birchwood in this district. And a lot of my, many of my former students are still living in the district and are voting for me. I've taught three people in high school that I taught their biological grandparents. So I have seen several people in the audience here that I have taught. If I could, please, Wesley, James, and February, would you stand and wave, please? Stand and wave if you'll look in the back. Those are my three grandchildren in this district are three of my 44,000 reasons for running for school board. And I want to do a good job first and foremost for the children, every child in this county. I've lived most of my life in District 9. My grandparents moved to District 9 in 1930. I have lived here since, since I was 17 consistently, but as a child, I lived here up until I was about nine. My father was a minister and he took churches in adjoining areas. And my mother's home is over near where DeAndre lives now, you know, in District 5. We have, I've spent countless hours in research trying to do the right thing for physical responsibility, trying to see how our finances can be most efficiently done. I've tried really hard to pull all stakeholders on school safety and every other issue. I met twice privately with the sheriff, Dr. Johnson, I have. Once publicly and then spent a day with a school seminar on safety. We were asked in a UNIFIA survey what our most important task was right now, and I think it is school safety, and that's what the people in my district think. I try to poll 100 people, I do a random poll on both sides, both the Harrison side and the Ullwa side. Try to do as evenly as possible, do a tally, and keep record of how many people want each thing in there on each side of an issue. I try to get constant input from students, from parents, and from the community. My cellphone and my email are published and I have quite sometimes 20-hour days. My wife will say, are you still on the phone? And I'll say, yes, are you still texting? Yes. And sometimes I go into midnight and sometimes it starts at 5:00 in the morning. When we had trees down, I had bus drivers say, you need to call off school. And that's not meant our realm authority. The school board is an institution that is set up, it's a position that's set up by state law. And there are three things that we have to do. One is we have to create and maintain policies. And that's a job. It's our policy book is several hundred pages thick. Then we also, thank you for one minute. We also have, we also have one employee and that's the superintendent. And then our third thing is finance. We are, we do not control the monies that come into us. We are to be wise stewards or wise caretakers of the money. We get our money from the county commission, from the state, and the federal government. The only, the only school board that I know of in the state of Tennessee that has their own funding body is our sister city to the north in Dayton, Tennessee. Their city council members are also their school board members. But I am thanking Mr. Bankston, our District 9 commissioners here tonight. I'm thankful for that. And I'm very appreciative that he and the mayor have come through with about $100 million plus for major building needs that were done. And we've done a lot in District 9. We've got a new, new school planned for Harrison. We've got a track, we've got five acres much needed purchased here, and several other things I'll talk about later. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Just a real quick note on the question time format. Each one of you will be allotted three minutes. So when the question is asked, you will each be given three minutes to respond. After each individual candidate has responded, you will have a one-minute opportunity for rebuttal. Each candidate will. If you do not have a one-minute rebuttal or anything to say as a rebuttal, just let me know and we'll move on to the next question. DeAndre, we'll begin with you, sir. Question one. Our community is here tonight and there has at times been a disconnect between our elected officials and the experiences and needs of Hamilton County residents. How will you ensure, if you were elected, that you would be both transparent and accountable to Hamilton County? And of course, as an incumbent, how would you prioritize being transparent and being accountable?
Thank you. I feel there is a disconnect when it comes to communication with students and teachers, getting information to and from the school board. I feel a lot of our issues in District 9 are always pushed aside and shoved and fixed with a Band-Aid until it gets bad enough for someone to step in and fix them. This is why I believe in self-assessments. I believe that that should be done regularly to hold, if I'm elected, myself as a school board member accountable for my actions and making sure that my district is having a positive impact for what I am doing and what I'm trying to do. And I'm also committed to bottom-up evaluations to ensure that every teacher in every level of the school system is being held accountable for what they're doing. I propose to address this issue by placing more effective student, teacher advisory councils. And what I mean by more effective teacher advisory councils, I mean to have two or three teachers from all over Hamilton County to meet and be able to talk to the school board members and the superintendent on a monthly basis. Someone like the student advisory council, they meet the second Monday of each month and they get to talk to the superintendent and let them know, let him know what he's going, what they're going through and stuff like that. And I feel like that's what the teacher advisory council should model after because I think the school board members need to start meeting with these teachers so they can get a more intimate idea of what's going on in the school system on a daily basis. And even our students, I think that would be a great time for our students to be able to communicate to the board members and let them know what's going on since some of them aren't able to step into the buildings as often as they should. I also believe that this will keep us accountable because of the things that are addressed and brought up in these council meetings. I want them to be able to assess me as a school board member and say, okay, we talked about this. Why haven't anything been done? Or why haven't this been addressed? I feel like that's where the self-assessments come in so I can hold my end of the stick and make sure that I am addressing these issues. And don't get me wrong, as a school board member, we can't fix everything, but I do want to be able to show the teachers and students that I am trying to make a difference in the district. Thank you.
And once again, the question, Steve, how will you ensure, if elected, reelected, that you will be both transparent and accountable to Hamilton County community?
Thank you. That's a good question. I believe in transparency, I believe in accountability. While I've been on the board, we have added Skyping. That we have all, now we have all our school board things are Skyped, so they're open to the public. We have, I have, most of us, I think all of us, if not all, most of us have presented our phone numbers, our cell phones, our emails. And I get, sometimes I get behind. I missed two days. I left my phone somewhere, it came back and missed two days and I had 400. So we get quite a few messages. I've been, received messages from Sadi Daisy the other day, and, or Sadi Daisy or Hickson, I'm not sure which. And the lady said, can you help me with a problem? And I said, well, you try it. She said, well, you have got the name for someone who tries to answer all questions. And so I am thankful that they understand that. I do want to answer all questions. I am concerned with District 9, but I'm concerned with every child in this county. Like I say, I've lived most of my life in this district, but I have lived in adjoining areas and I went to school at an intercity school where my father worked with an intercity mission on what used to be Harriet Tubman Homes. So I'm familiar with it throughout the whole, throughout the whole system. I've worked closely with commissioners and we need to do that in the mayor. And I think that's essential that we do. We have to be partners. And since I've been on the board, the transparency, I think, has improved greatly. And it is also the unity between the different governmental bodies. And I think that's really important. We, we have, the commission meetings are every Wednesday. Is that right, Mr. Bankston? And every Wednesday, I would urge you to go to the courthouse, although it'll be in the Paul McDaniel Building for Finance tomorrow. I urge you to come. Normally, we have the third Thursday of the month. You're welcome to come in person to the school board meetings. And if you can't come in person, please get in on Skype because it will be there. And we keep a record of it. You can get it at a later date. You can even look it up on Skype at a later date. There are certain things on transparency that are not allowed. Certain personnel questions, certain HR questions, certain things that are not allowed. And so what I do normally is go through first hour attorney. And if I'm not satisfied with our school board attorney's question, an answer to the question, then I'll go to the four state attorneys at the school board and I know all of them on a first-name basis now. And the legality is something that we have to be very careful of. We can be, we can easily lose a lawsuit and we don't want to do that. We want to be as transparent. And I, once again, on transparency, I try to, I reach out to at least 100 people in a random poll for every major issue. And I have been in schools, every school in this district, almost every month, the 11 schools in District 9, I've been in twice a month. That's my goal, sometimes three, four, five times. I have taught or co-taught classes in there. And I always ask students what their point of view is and their teachers. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, would you like the opportunity for a one-minute rebuttal?
I don't need one either.
UNIFIA and Chattanooga 2.0 are both committed to ensuring equity for all our young people in Hamilton County. Together, we define equity as all students reaching their full potential by ensuring they have access to the resources and supports that meet their individual needs. In practice, equity will show itself in our work and in our policies and those that we support, as well as the conditions we enable and the coalitions we mobilize and the systems we seek to improve. We know that there are some schools in District 9 that are concentrated poverty of more than the student body is eligible for free and reduced lunch. Additionally, given the large size of our district, we know that rural communities can also be isolated from city-centered resources as well as opportunities. Historically across our country and in our, and in our county, we have struggled to ensure adequate racial and socioeconomic integration of our public schools. A strategy that research has shown to be effective for improving student outcomes. As a school board member, what specific strategies, Mr. Highlander, will you employ to ensure a plan is developed and implemented to fully integrate our public schools to ensure equity for all of our young people?
Thanks, sir. I certainly believe in equity. I think it's very important that we have equity. I believe that every knee, every child has specific and personal needs. They are so variant, it's unbelievable. But I believe most children and most parents want their children in a community school. Quite often, when, when my dad was working in intercity, the parents would not have cars and they'd have difficulty if the child was sick getting to them. I think community schools are very important, but also diversity and opportunities are important for every child. We need to look at, our schools in this district have some of the highest pupil teacher ratios in the entire county. I think we, what we on the school board did at Rivermont, which was a good performing school, and the majority of us voted to make Rivermont an open enrollment for children to come in from outside. And I'm very thankful that we did. It was the right thing to do. To that end, I volunteered and was accepted to be on the Equity Task Force. We have had one introductory meeting. We have our first work session on this Wednesday from 10:00 to 12:00. And I'm looking forward to that. I think we would be premature to list specific plans until we see what is recommended by the Equity Task Force. And then, and then the Equity Task Force will present what they're going to and it will be voted on and the magic number is five. It'll take five board members to vote any plan in. But I think we need to look and see what the Equity Task Force recommends rather than, than, this is just for me personally. Everyone has a right to do what they think is correct. And we have First Amendment rights of free speech in this country, which I'm thankful for, for each of my fellow board members. I personally would like to prefer to do things correctly rather than too fast. And so I want to be sure and see what the Equity Task Force that I'm serving on says first and then evaluate that, do a careful evaluation, and see what's best for the, for all the students in this county. Thank you so much.
Mr. Anderson, as a school board member, what specific strategies will you employ to ensure a plan is developed and implemented to fully integrate our public schools to ensure equity for all of our young people?
I believe we must work hand in hand with the equity, the chief equity officer and other school connections in the school system to provide the needs that teachers may have. And I agree with you, Mr. Steve Highlander. Every student, every teacher in every school in Hamilton County have different things that they need in order to make them successful. But with that being said, I do support having more diversity in the schools. Diversity and inclusion is critical for success past schooling. When you're in the rural world, being able to be well-rounded and understand cultures and different people's backgrounds, it helps you succeed and research says that. I also have a story that I would like to share. When I was in the military, you had to go to the basic training and you had to be around people from different backgrounds, different races, racial color, and things like that. Everyone there isn't the same and everyone there doesn't have the same walk of life as you. But you still have to manage to work together as a team. And I feel if we strive to make our schools a little more diversitized with socioeconomic and ethnic backgrounds, I feel like that will help our students thrive after they graduate. And I feel like, I understand transportation is an issue for a lot of people and a lot of people feel that we may not understand how all that's going to work. And trust me, I'm in the same boat as you. But there are, are some counties, for example, Kentucky, that have done something like this, something like open enrollment, controlled choice. And it works. And I feel if we sat down together as a team and a school board team and kind of thought about that a little more, a little deeper, and remodeled our Hamilton County system like that, maybe things would change in the school system and we will see different outcomes when it comes to the poverty rates, the test scores and things like that. I understand freedom of speech is something that everyone in America has, but I think at times we have to watch what we say and remember that everyone doesn't believe the same thing that we believe in. So don't go and say that you think that is okay. Force everyone to think that segregated schools is okay because it's not. It's 2018. Thank you.
Mr. Highlander, would you like the opportunity to rebuttal?
I'm not disagreeing basically with what my friend, young friend says. What I am saying is I think that, that some of, a couple of the school board members have been facing misinterpretation. And I think that mainly what they were saying, I have read very closely what their, what their statements were. And they were not, anyone that thinks that Mr. Smith is racially involved is foolish. Mr. Smith has raised 19 African-American children in his home. I mean, he is very concerned. No one has spoken up for, for African-American and intercity children more than Joe Smith has. So we may disagree on something, but I very much appreciate the fact that he is involved in diversity. But me and Ms. Thurman have, the way I read it, is not trying to be racist, they're trying to be economically practical. And so whether you agree or not with that, I, I think that there's a little misconception there. I want to kind of straighten that. Thank you.
We just have one, one-minute rebuttal.
Just to clarify, I didn't say anything about racism or anything. I just said I feel that we can't be bearing of what we say in the public and expect everyone to agree with what we think. And also, I do feel as the chairman of the board, if you were someone who were to agree with this, and you seem to do, I just would have liked, as a student growing up in this county, for you to have, represent the board a little bit better by publicly saying what she said tonight. I felt that would have been a way more respectful way to handle the situation than the way it was. I feel like you still are, but I feel like publicly, it would have been nice for people to see both sides of the party and not just the one that was publicized.
I just want to remind everybody, this is a good transition time. If you have any questions that you would like to answer based upon the response that the candidates are giving or any that they're based upon not response that the candidates are giving, please fill those cards out. We'll be collecting those at the end of the evening. And we hope if you have a pressing question, you'll have, will have the ability to have it addressed. Only 42% of our kindergartens, our kindergarteners are coming to school ready to learn on day one. The rate of readiness is half that in schools of concentrated poverty, which District 9 has, some of those schools. But what are your thoughts on the role of early childhood education and expanding programs such as Camp K, pilot that will support 300 rising kindergarteners this summer in getting foundational skills to be successful in schools?
I would love to meet with early childhood centers and pre-K organizations to speak on ways that I, if elected, as a board member, can help them improve enrollment for students. I would help encourage parents to enroll their students to help better plan for kindergarten readiness. Though, I would like to see some things implemented in these extensive early childhood programs like the Camp K Pilot. First, referring to the percentage above, only 42% of our students in kindergarten on day one are ready for kindergarten. I, it's very clear that early childhood education isn't aimed for kindergarten readiness because if that was the case, then that percentage would be a lot higher. I would like to see kindergarten teachers connect with these organizations like the Camp K Pilot to make sure that they're focusing on the curriculum that is needed to be learned for students to be ready for kindergarten on day one. My mother is a director and is in an early childhood organization. And we kind of sat down and talked about this question for a long time because I really wanted to know more about this. I wanted to know how in her opinion, are the students ready or not? And she told me that, you know, when I was in early childhood, the teachers actually sat down with you, went over your alphabets, traced your name, went over your numbers. And she was saying that in some And she was saying that in some organizations across the board, her incorporation, so I'm not saying all, they're kind of going away from that curriculum. They're starting to kind of focus more on learning through play. One of their questions were, "How do you jump? Show me how to jump," or "Show me how to skip." And I feel like those are the reasons that the percentages are so low nowadays. So I do agree with things like Camp K Pilot, but I would hope to see that, oh, sorry. I would hope to see that they're aiming towards kindergarten readiness and focusing on the fundamentals that those students need in order to be able to be prepared for their day one of kindergarten.
A follow-up question for you. What specifics do you feel are important in getting them prepared? I know a lot of, a lot of us here are parents, and we are very adamant about making sure that our children are prepared. What are some specifics that you feel students that age need to know going in?
Thank you for that. Sorry if I wasn't clear. I just feel like going into kindergarten, some of the, you know, low poverty areas, it's hard for them to teach their kids when they have to work all day, all night to provide for their family. And it's hard for them to teach them even their ABCs, their numbers, or how to give them write. So when you're bringing those students on day one to a kindergarten teacher, they already have their lesson planned out. Of course, they're going to go over that, but it's kind of hard to, it's going to slow the other 42% down when you have this other percentage of people, kids, that don't know anything. So I feel that's what I'm talking about. If they can come into school knowing their ABCs, knowing their numbers, or knowing at least how to write, I feel like that would help those kindergarten teachers out to prepare for those students, to help them be successful their first year of, you know, public school or private school.
Mr. Highlander, what are your thoughts on the role of early childhood education and expanding programs?
Thank you. I believe Camp K is a great idea. In case some of you are not aware, it's a combination effort between the community and the school system. I am very thankful for it, and that's, they're correct, that many students coming from disadvantaged homes do not have the opportunities that the others do, and we need to do something. The federal government and the state governments have provided funding for many disadvantaged areas, and schools provide pre-Ks in disadvantaged areas but not in the more affluent areas. So we, do we have enough? I don't think we do. But we, by the state law, we are not required, although while it's great, and I think it's wonderful, we do not have the funding for pre-K education other than for disadvantaged schools. And I think it's wonderful we have it everywhere. I would love to see community partners, churches, community organizations raise funding and have it. Camp K is dealing directly with the standards that kindergarten children need to know. I had a friend of mine was, whose grandchildren were in private school, said, "Steve, we need to fire every teacher whose child is not on grade level at the end of the school year." And I said, "Wow, what about the ones who come that are not prepared for that grade level?" He said, "Well, that's an excuse, it's just a good excuse." And we argued back and forth, and finally changed the tone of the discussion, and I said, "Well, your children go to this and so, your grandchildren go to this and so kindergarten and this and so private school." And he said, "Yes." And I said, "What's the reading level? Are you going to volunteer?" "Oh, yes, they're, they're all reading when they come there." "So they all know their primary colors?" "Oh, yeah, primary and secondary." "Their letters?" "Oh, yeah, they can write every letter, upper and lowercase when they come." "Every title there?" "Wow." "And what's their average vocabulary, do you know?" He said, "About 200, 2500 to 3000 words." I said, "That's great." I said, "So you think then, on the other hand, that a kindergarten teacher that has a child coming in with a 500-word vocabulary, not being able to recognize any primary colors, any upper or lowercase letters, then at the end of the school year, we need to fire that teacher?" He said, "Oh, I see what you mean." And so he was able to come through and explain that. And we, as, as, I mean, with my 45 years in education, I've got 15 different areas of certification, including early childhood. And I've taught everything from early childhood to vocational agriculture, of course, my favorite being AP history, all different, AP European, AP World, or AP US. But I think we can do things that are fun, that are standards-based at every level that kids can learn from. We need to have creative, provocative learning activities from the pre-K all the way through high school. Thank you.
Deandre, would you like the opportunity for one minute rebuttal? In the past, there's not been a multi-year strategic plan that guided budget priorities or is directly linked to student outcomes. This means that each year, our community and school faces a zero-sum dynamic where access to limited resources are not made based on a long-term vision of our county schools, but rather based on a crisis framework that continues to happen annually. How are you, as a school board member, going to advocate for and help build out a multi-year strategic plan and budget that is open and accessible to our community and maintains inequity lens, Mr. Highlander?
Thank you. I have been studying great, in great detail, the budget, as my fellow board members have. Line-by-line items are very difficult to follow, but we have tried to do that. We have asked our people in the central office to make this more friendly for users to come in, for both us and the general public, which they have done. They have presented things online, which they'd never done before I came on the school board. We, it's much, a much more transparent financial procedure than it's ever been in the past. Our board responsibility is to outline the needs for the next few years: programs, infrastructure, professional personnel needs, including exceptional ed. And those things vary from time to time. Some of you may or may not be aware that we have a three-year extended plan right now. It's a plan. We do not know for sure how much money we're going to be getting from the county, the state, and the federal government. We can plan tentatively, and that's what we're trying to do. I would love, we're working towards zero-based budgeting, and we're getting closer to it. Dr. Johnson is willing to work with us on that, and I think we're getting closer to it. We have to work with the funding agencies. So when we talk about adding major expenses, major expenses, whether it's major addition to transportation, whether it's something else, we need to look at what we're going to cut. One of my primary focuses, and we're going to discuss it in a minute, is vocational needs, whether it's, whether it's electricity and welding, or whether it's mechatronics. But when we add those things, it costs a tremendous amount of money. Right now, the biggest thing is safety that we're looking at. We're cutting programs to add safety. So when we spend money, money has to be cut from somewhere. The board has no control over our funding. We're dependent on the other governmental agencies at the county, at the state, and the federal level. And we, we can lobby them, we can request from them, and I'm very thankful, once again, I'll say it again, Mr. Bankston's here, I'm thankful for the commission, and I'm thankful for the mayor taking steps that they did to give the new buildings that we had and the new athletic facilities that we've had. Ullawa High School is bursting at the seams. Without that five-acre addition that, that we were able to buy, they would really be hurting in the next five or 10 years. We, they can, we would have lost a lawsuit for equity, for gender equity, that now the girls have a soccer field that they would not have had. You know, I signed an emergency order to get that going with a low bid. We have rung to put an academic building there. Central High School is going to have a track for the first time, and I went before the commission, Chester knows, and said Central High School has had no major additions in the last 30 years that they need. And my young friend was at the commission meeting when I requested that. And I'm trying to be an advocate for, for every child in the county, every school in the county, but especially for District Nine. And I've been vocal and well-spoken, I think, about that. At least, I've tried to. Thank you so much.
Mr. Highlander, just a quick follow-up. You mentioned about budgets and cutting and safety and programs. How would you propose to balance safety and programs in terms of budgeting? Because I know that the safety of our students is absolutely a priority. I think we would all agree with that, but also so are our programs and their needs. How would you, again, look to balance that, programs and safety from a financial point of view?
You're asking the $64 million question. If I had 64 million, I could just hand it over. But I, one thing, one thing I gained, Dr. Johnson and three other board members and I went to the state safety summit. Senator Alexander sent some of his people there, the Sheriff's Association, SRO Association came out with certain things, and I picked up some ideas that I passed on to Sheriff Hammond, how we can, certain things that we could do to cut our expenses. It will cost, Sheriff Hammond has told us to add an SRO. Right now, we have 79 schools, 29 of them have SROs and 50 do not. To add an SRO is $80,000 annually, $120,000 the first year. And so you're talking about four to six million dollars annually additional. You're going to take 10% addition, that, and it's just a tremendous amount of money. There are certain things we've done. We've put in the raptor system, we've put in automatic locking doors, and, and I had led the charge for that, I'm for that. I will say that one of the gentlemen that came to safety issues had been at Columbine. Some of you may remember, if you're old enough as I am, to remember the horrible atrocity at Columbine in Colorado. And the principal said, "We have done so many good things now, we've made so many changes." And let me say this, for every educator, every parent, and every teacher who might be here this evening, there's still a human element. The principal's bragging on the automatic locking doors, the facial recognition system, everything. And he said, "And here's where the shooter came in those years ago through a cafeteria door, and someone had propped an aluminum can so they could get in and out." And he was, this, this principal was devastated. I mean devastated. We still need to educate our teachers, our administrators, and our children on safety issues. And, and we are doing everything that we can, and it's a very difficult task to find the money to do that. We are, we have cut some programs, Dr. Johnson's talked about some of the programs that we've cut to do that. And, and I would have to look at the line items to see what was cut. But we, it's very difficult to do, but it's essential. Everyone wants their children safe. And, and I, there, I want my grandchildren and every one other 44-plus-thousand kids safe. And SROs are great, but they're not perfect, as we see in Lakeland, Florida. The SRO did not do her job, his job, as he should have. And that's, I cannot imagine a person putting his personal safety ahead of the children there, but there are some people that do. And, and we just do the very best we can and then pray for the results to come back, which I do. But once again, education of proper and safe procedures is one of the very best things that we can do, in addition to spending as much money as we possibly can. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, again, how are you, as a school board or as an incumbent school board member, going to advocate for and help build out a multi-year strategic plan and budget that is open and accessible to the community and maintains inequity lens?
I believe to have a multi, but a multi-year budget plan will help the community visually see where the money is going, and we're, we're using it long-term, and where we're spending the money far as the, how effectively we're spending the money. As a college student, I understand the importance of making sure that I'm budgeting something, and I understand that the school system is way larger than I am, and it's a multi-million-dollar organization, and I feel creating a five-year plan as a guideline will help us figure out where we're going with our needs for the facilities and to make sure that we're creating a, creating a safe facility. I do want to make sure I work closely with our county commissioner, Chester Bankston, if elected, to assure that we have all the resources and materials that we need to ensure that we're making it accessible to the public and making sure that we're using a five-year plan. And I also want to say, when I was doing the Back the Track campaign to get Central a new track, I went around to different schools in my district and talked to them, talked to the administration and stuff. And, and quote, this is what I hear, "We have to deal with, when it rains, leaks coming through their ground, when it thunderstorms, power goes off. We can't teach our students when we have to go through something like that." And I feel if we have a multi-budget plan, we can make sure that we won't let schools like Harrison fall through the cracks again. Last year, when I was doing the Back the Track campaign, I had the opportunity to talk to a lot of different schools and bring light to the school board about these situations. Here I was advocating for Central just a new track, and we brought all these situations up with Harrison needed a new school, CS, AS needed a new school, and that's when we got to do the prioritizing, the priority list of what schools need to be number one, number two, and things like that. And I'm not here to toot my own horn, but I was really glad that me trying to get Central track brought light to all these things that needed to be fixed. And you were there for us when we were going up against the county commission, but it was uphill battle to get there. We had to go through a lot of different things and a lot of different advocating, and I feel if we had this five-year, multi-year, or whatever year you want to call it, budget plan, we would be able to do more things like that and make sure we aren't in the hole that we are in now. Make sure we're taking care of our schools, make sure we're not just putting the Band-Aid on it and saying, "Okay, we fixed it for now, but in two months, it's going to be broken again." I want to make sure that we're actually using the money that we have to build up our schools and stop building schools just for the heck of it.
Could I make up?
Yes.
This may not have been what Deandre said, I meant to say, what he said was about uphill battle against the commission. Chester Bankston has worked with me toward doing things for Central. The last three and a half years...
I made the fight for that track.
Yes, sir. He and, and he and I have both pushed for that for the three and a half years. And Deandre, I appreciate the push that you made last year, I really do. But Chester and I have been working on that for multiple years, and for everything that we've got going on. I started school at Harrison Elementary School, and I know the condition it's in. And my mother started in Harrison when it was, before that building was built, so it's 80-plus years old. So I am thankful that, and I think that our commission is working with us on that. I worked really hard, and I don't think, you probably didn't mean it the way it came out, but of being, working against the commission. I think the commission's working with us. Thank you.
I wasn't meaning uphill battle to the county commission. I was meaning uphill battle for when we will have these panels and these forums talking to the community members to make sure we have support at the school board meetings to be voted to get a new track and to be put on the top of the priority list. And we get told, "Yes, come to the board meetings. Yes, please come and talk, and I have your support." And when we get there, we don't have that support. And that's what I was meaning by that. I didn't have anything to say against our county commissioner, but I was meaning to say it's time for someone to be in that position that's going to have a backbone and that's going to fight so hard. Last year was four months that I fought for it, and look at where we are now. That track has been broke for a lot longer than four months. That's all.
Seems to be a very important, important question and topic. Mr. Highlander, would you like another opportunity to have a response? And then, Mr. Anderson, I'd like to give you another opportunity. I want to make sure that we are focusing on the questions that seem to be very important to the community members here.
Thank you. This is three and a half years I've been on the board, all three and a half. I've worked really hard for this district. We've accomplished a lot of things. We opened up Ullawa Elementary. We, you know, I was able to convince my fellow board members to make Harrison the number one. Also, Snow Hill addition. The Birchwood kids are riding past Snow Hill to Ullawa Elementary. Ullawa Elementary opened and is bursting at the seams already. And so we, we also took nine and a half million dollars out of the fund balance to repair roofs that were dangerous, and as Deandre indicated, we, we have to have roofs that are not leaking for our children. And so we have done that. And we're trying to do, we're trying to set even a higher-quality roof and higher-quality buildings that will last not 10 years, but 30 or 40 years, and that's our, that's our goal and direction. I have worked diligently my three and a half years, and anyone that says that I've not is just not paying close attention. Thank you so much.
Like I said previously, at a time like this, time where it's pivotal for change, I think it's time for someone who's going to be in there is going to keep their word, who's going to make sure they're not saving a vote for a friend down the line, that's going to make sure they're going to vote the way that they say they were going to vote, and they're going to do the things that they say they're going to do. I know at times it gets hard because this is politics. You want to keep your friends close and everything like that, but my biggest talent right now is I have no strings to anyone in this industry. And the reason I'm doing this is to make students have a better future and make teachers feel more comfortable in the industry that they decide to go into. I'm not here to make friends, I'm not here to do anything. I'm here to better my schools in District Nine, and that's all I have for this topic.
Just one final reminder, if anyone has any comment cards where they want to have a question to ask, this is going to be the last go before the final question that we're going to ask. So it's very important, if you do have a question that you would like to have reviewed to be asked, please make sure you're... to be asked, please make sure you turn that in right now. Gentlemen, thank you very much. This will be the final question outside of the ones that the audience will be asking. What do you think about dual enrollment programs in schools that teaches specific skill and lead to a credential? Mr. Anderson.
Currently in District Nine, Volkswagen partners with local schools to help increase the post-high school readiness. And this successful business school collaboration should be implemented all across towns and county. I really like that Central decided to do something like that, and I feel that there should be more job shadowing opportunities with local businesses in order to help students who aren't necessarily going to pursue a college career, but want to go straight into the workforce. I think as a school board member, my goal would be to, how can I work this? My goal was to be, to get out in the community a little more and make those opportunities happen for the students that are in my district, so they have that option to want to go to school or want to go to college. And with that being said, I'm for dual enrollment, though there's a cap per Tennessee dual enrollment grant that students cannot succeed $1,200 per year, and depending on the curriculum in the school, depending on how the schools run, some students can't take those classes until their senior year, and they can only take up to $1,200 worth of class. And if they come from a family with low income or can't meet some of the requirements, they're not able to have that same opportunity to do those dual enrollment classes. So I would love for students to be able to do that, but I think if I was elected, I would want to sit down and figure out a way that we can kind of make it a little more fair, other than students meeting a certain requirement or they can't do because of their income. So yeah, that's why I still have an issue.
Mr. Highlander, what do you think about dual enrollment programs in schools that teaches specific skill and lead to a credential?
May I ask a question before my time starts? Now, I perceive that to be vocational dual enrollment, and I think Mr. Anderson referred primarily to college dual enrollment with the $1,200, right?
I agree with both points.
Both, okay. Well, my children, I already started out there. My children, both, both my daughters did dual enrollment with Jet State, and it's a wonderful program, and they both went as full-fledged sophomores or almost juniors in college, it's a great program. But I think what we're referring to here is vocational dual enrollment, and I think it's absolutely fabulous. I campaigned on it, there's been seldom a board meeting that's gone by this, I've not said how important it is. Whereas college was right for me, it's not right for a large percentage of our students. And it's better to get them prepared with credentials for the workforce, and I have been an advocate for that, whether it's Megatronics and robotics in the Volkswagen program or the Geston program that we've approved that we're working on with them, and I've been in those places, I've been in Geston, I have been in Volkswagen Academy, and all of our board members have. We have been very, we've been very concerned with that. Now, I will say, many children a few years ago were required, every child was required to go to college track, and I think that's absolutely foolish. Having been a teacher for 45 years, I talk with teachers, I talk with students, I talk with parents, and most of them want something to get their child ready. For a young man or a young lady that works well with their hands, that's wonderful, and they still need to meet the basic high school requirements. But it's essential that we meet their life skills and their life desires and their talents and their abilities. And that's part of, that's part of equity, I think, meeting the individual need of every child, whether they're inner-city or rural, whether they're suburban, whether they're African-American or Hispanic or Caucasian, it matters not. We need to try to meet their needs. And I promise you, there are electricians and pipe fitters and plumbers that make more money than teachers. And I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I'm just saying it's a fact. And I'm thankful for my 45 years in education. I'm thankful that I've been able to influence lives, and I want to continue to influence young lives. But I think, and I have spoken up continually for vocational education, whether it's the modern, Megatronics, computerized, or it's electricity, carpentry, animal husbandry, or the different vocational, which I'm certified, one of my 15 years of certification is vocational agriculture. And that involves not just farming, but involves landscaping and different things like that. So I think there are so many young people that do better in school when they have something that fits their need. And when you're saying, when I tell a young person, "Well, if you are passing your English and your math and your social studies, then you will have this opportunity to get in this program." And I will say, the Future Ready Institutes, we don't have, they don't have to wait till their senior year. We're starting them with 75 of the Future Ready Institute in the local school with opportunities for 25 to come in from the outside, and I'm thankful for that. Thank you.
Please let the opportunity go over, but. Thank you, everyone. We're going to transition now to audience questions. I'm going to first ask this of you, Mr. Highlander. How do you think your age and personal experience in the district will help you as a school board member, or has helped you as a school board member?
Well, you know, when you, when you have done this as many years as I have, and I still like working with young people. I've come into Ulloa High School and Central and Middle Skills, and I've taught Holocaust Studies where I spent the summer in Poland and Israel doing that, I've gone to elementary schools and taught that. But when I've done that, that's a, if you've never had the opportunity, that's a great program to illustrate the need for stalking bullying and harassment, because that's the nth degree, genocide is the nth degree of harassment and bullying. And I think all the years that I've spent and my interaction with teachers for the last almost half-century, it's made it much easier for me to understand when a teacher or a parent or a principal or a district school board member or another district school board member, or even someone in the company, and we discuss things, I have a much better knowledge of it. And I think, I'm 66 years old, I feel like I'm still, I still have a few brain cells left. I enjoy, when I go into an AP class, I will take some $1 bills and say, "If you can stunt me on a current, what you're doing currently in your AP history class, I'll give you a dollar for a soft drink." And so far, they haven't stunted me because I try to stay current. But also then, I will give them, ask them good questions, positive questions, thought-provoking questions, and I will reward them with that. And then I'll say, "What can I as a school board member do for you?" And I'll ask the teachers the same thing, and ask the principals the same thing. And I haven't opened the door because of, because, you know, I've been through college, I've been through a lot of education, I've been through different degrees, but the degrees don't make it as much as the heart does. So, how am I doing on time here? One minute, well, I'll keep talking then. I have never, Chester will say, I'll say I've never been shy about talking, and Chester said amen, I think, but I know my wife would. But I very much appreciate vocational education, I appreciate people coming in from the work world. I appreciate Mr. Bynston, who was, he understands that more than most people, because Mr. Bynston is an electrician, and he has his own electrical company, and many, he understands the need. Ulloa High School has a great electrical program, and one thing that I tried to work with the superintendent on is reopening Harrison Bay Vocational School, and there were six bays that were resting away, and they decided it would take a year to get it ready, but we're both Central and Ulloa, we're going to be able to use Harrison Bay as a vocational school. And add some really good programs that expand the programs that are already there as part of their Future Ready Institutes, which I am very excited about. Kirkman High School, when I was a young person, sent many, many people into credential programs and into jobs right out of high school, and I'd love to see that again. I am all for it. Thank you.
Deandre, how do you think your age and experience, experiences in the district will help you as a school board member?
I've been in the district since I was in third grade, and I've been able to get connections with people, and I'm kind of grown up in that district. And at my age, I just love the schools. I've been in the schools for a while. I know exactly both parties, I know exactly what's not working for the teachers, I know exactly what's not working for the students. And I feel like with my youthful personality and my youthful, like, perspectives for things, it will change a little bit of what's going on. As our current president would say, it's kind of time to drain the swamp and do something new. It's time for us to incorporate some new things on that board, and I feel like having a young, I feel like having more of a perspective of change in mind, it will help be able to incorporate things that we may not think of if we continue to do the same thing with the older age type thing. Like, that's nothing wrong, but I run into, this is not, I just run into people all the time, I run into people all the time that says, "Aren't you a little too young to be on the school board?" And sometimes I want to say, "Do you have to be a certain age to run and to change and do something different on the school board?" So, no, I feel like my age will definitely help and help me bring new things and new different ideas that we might not think about because we're a little uncomfortable where we are. So I think having someone new come in and be able to shake things up a little bit, I think it's time for that. And also, for example, I was talking to someone, and they were like, "Are you scared that someone might ask, 'Well, you're young, you might get tired of doing this,' so what would your response be for that?" And listen, I campaigned for four hard months for a track that I was never going to be able to run on. I mean, I've had to go over obstacles, I've had to do all kinds of things to get where we are now with the track, and I'm telling you, some days I would sit in my bed in my senior year, and I'm like, "Why am I doing this?" And then I remember why I was doing it, it's because I'm passionate for it, and I want to see younger students thrive, and I want to see teachers thrive. I want teachers to love going to work. I hear some teachers, they just feel so defeated, and they should never feel like that when they're teaching the future of our country. And that's another point that I want to bring up. I want to be able to have a say for the future, because I am the future. I feel like a lot of times we have to realize that the generations that is upcoming is the people that's going to hold the leadership position, so why stop us when we're young?
Yes, you've got one minute rebuttal.
It's more of a comment than it is rebuttal, and I'm thankful for his youthful enthusiasm. It's very interesting to me that he is a disciple of President Trump, so I thought that was, I just thought, I'm joking, I just thought, but, sorry, but sometimes I think humor is good, we have a little, little opportunity to do that, and I do appreciate that. But thank you.
Don't pour him on that, please.
Never normal. Deandre, this question is specific to you, of course, Mr. Highlander, you'll have the opportunity to address it if you'd like to as well. Deandre, you speak a great deal about validating the voices of the student and teaching, and the teaching population, but what about parents and general public?
So that's a really good point. My campaign is surrounded on student and teacher voice, but in there I do talk about how I want to have more of a community input, and that involves parents. I feel like a lot of times, our parents do get the short straw of the bunch, and they do feel like they're kind of pushed aside and not used. And the only reason why I keep harping about students and teachers is because that's something that I'm passionate about, and that's something that I have been working with for the last year and a half. But I do want to see more of a community input, have parents come out to things, and if I was to be elected as a school board member, I wouldn't mind having parents come to the teacher advisory council meeting and student advisory council meeting. I think that's a really great opportunity for the parent to be able to see what's going on in a more intimate level, like I said previously. I feel like a lot of times it's just a disconnect, and one of the things that I want to do as a school board member is I want to bring connection back. I want to reconnect with parents and reconnect with students and be able to, I don't know, kumbaya together, you know? I think it's time for something like that to happen in our district, because it, to me, I feel it's divided at times, it's like you've got Harrison on the side, and Ulloa on the side. And it doesn't have to be that way, but that's just something that happens over a few years, and I want to be able to see if we can bring everyone together and kumbaya together. So that's pretty much all I have for that question.
Do I get an opportunity?
You do, you do. I'll ask the question again. Steve, how would you validate parents and the general public in ensuring that they have any information they're needing as well?
This is a one-minute?
I have been validating parents, students, and teachers for the last 45 years, and if anyone says, "Am I going to get tired of it?", don't think so. That's my life. My life has been committed to students first, and then the parents and the teachers, and I talk to people day in and day out about that. I, it's Deandre, I appreciate his passion, mine has been almost a half-century, and it continues. We have, in addition to, I'm sorry, which question again?
Deandre spoke a great deal about validating the voices of the student and teacher, student and teaching population, but what about parents and general public?
Thank you. I think I have a pretty good feel for the general public. I have, I reach out to them, I take calls, I go to forums. In addition to that, I have made it a point, the superintendent has three different groups he meets with. As Deandre alluded to, the student leadership group, which I meet with, as many times I've been, I think, three times this year, listen to their input, and then they usually give me an opportunity to ask. When Deandre was on the student leadership group, I think I went several times, not always, but whenever I could, more than once. I've been three or four times this year, also to the parent advisory board, and also to the teacher advisory board. I went to PEF and spent both Ms. Gritza Mosley-Jones, and I spent a whole evening on April 24th with a group of interested teachers. And I work with HCEA, the Local Teachers Union. But also, I go out in the community, day in and day out. Like I say, I've lived in this community most of my life, I still live there, and I am in the community all the time. So I try to talk to people at the grocery store, I talk to them at the churches, and I do preach in an inner-city church, but I tend, I tend one here when I'm not, so when I'm not down there preaching. So I am thankful for the opportunity to connect with a lot of people. I think with 45 years in education, I have learned how to deal with parents and with other teachers and with students, and I like dealing with students. I still work part-time at an alternative school in Georgia, and I have a very diverse population that I work with. I have African-Americans and Caucasians, I have, in one class, I have three young men and one young lady wearing ankle bracelets. And so they are, can be a challenge, and I know how to deal with young people, and I know how to get through to them and meet the standards. But I also know how to deal with their parents and try to encourage them, and I feel like I've done that successfully for 45 years, and want to continue. I had, quite often, I had a boy several years ago that was going to be a lineman in Georgia, he was a great big kid, and he would cheat on his quizzes, and he would get the note from someone else, "I changed the US history questions." And he said, "Coach Houndler, I think you made a mistake, I know I got all these right." Well, his buddy had told him what the questions were, "Well, I rearranged the questions." And so he said, I said, "No, no, I got them all right." You mean, I said, "Young man, you think Martha Washington was the first president?" He said, "Oh." So I talked the parent into getting him into an after-school study group, and he was successful at the University of Georgia.
This is just food for thought, I don't want to argue, but when will it ever be time for the young population to start taking those leaderships? You know, I hear you said that you've been doing this for 45 years, but I just want to know, when do you think is time? And I've told you this before, it is my passion, and it is something I'm passionate about, but when is it time for us to be able to take on that torch of passion as well? And like I said, when we talked before, do you want me to just wait until you were ready and then say, "Okay, you can take it now"? Just food for thought.
Is that a rhetorical question, or does he want me to answer?
No, seriously, food for thought, like.
Sounds like it was just a statement.
It's a rhetorical question.
I believe so.
Okay, okay.
I like this question coming up. Deandre, in your opinion, and this will be for Mr. Highlander next, in your opinion, what positive accomplishments has a school board made over the last four years?
You know, that's a hard question, because I'm not here to down the school board at all, and I've said this many times, I think Steve Highlander is a great person, I feel like he does great work, but I feel like it is time for just something- like he does great work, um, but I feel like it is time for just something different on the board. And I feel like in the past four years, the only thing that I really think that I can think of is I like the, I like the way that they're moving. I like where they're trying to go. Um, do I think they're going to get there anytime soon if things don't change? No, it's going to be a while, but, um, I do see where they're trying to go and I feel they can get there if some things change. Um, and that's my answer.
What are some of those, just to expand on that, what, what are some of your, um, your thoughts on what you could bring to the table that would get the school board to that point?
Well, I feel like we need to stop being comfortable and living inside of our offices. Um, and that's not directed to just Steve, but that's directed to a lot of the current school board members. I feel like they're starting to get a little complacent on the board and they're not understanding what their title and what their roles and responsibilities are on the board. Um, and I say that because of where we are today and the conversations that we're having today. Um, that's something that we shouldn't be having in the H O fight of segregation of whether it's by your skin color, by your socioeconomic, we, we shouldn't be there right now. Um, and I, I feel like if things get shaken up on the board and we get some new faces up there and new perspectives, those things that Superintendent Dr. Johnson is trying to do will be completed and will be helpful because there's no one fighting against it, there's no one resisting against it. Um, you have new people with open minds that want to see change and I feel like that's the best way to do it, is to get some new faces.
Same question to Mr. Highlander, in your opinion, what positive accomplishment or accomplishments has the school board made over the last four years?
Thank you. Let me remind you, there are certain, there are only three responsibilities that the school board and three powers that the school board has. One is they have one employee and that's the superintendent. Uh, we do not have any control over the principals, the teachers. We can give advice, we can make recommendations, but legally, we have absolutely no control over that. We get, I, many times I have advised Dr. Johnson, who, who is very vibrant and very young and very energetic and I appreciate him very much. Do I agree with everything he says? No. Uh, if, if anyone thinks I'm sitting in an office, they have not seen me going around the schools. Our 11 schools I have been in almost usually two, three and four times a month. And I try to go into as many P T A meetings as I can and I try to get perspective from parents and from students and from teachers and administrators. But one thing we've done, we've increased transparency. You know, we started Skyping everything. We put the finances on, on the website. We have, uh, and I have pushed in our district, in our district, we have got under my leadership and we, in conjunction, working with other, with the commission and other school board members, we've got the new, new school for Harrison, we opened Udoa Elementary School, we got the, we got the five acres that we've managed to push through to get for Udoa High School, we got the addition on Snow Hill for overcrowding. If you are not aware, and most of you who live here are, this is the fastest growing region in Hampton County. I mean, it is growing so fast, it's unbelievable. And we have the highest pupil teacher ratio. And so we are, we have a lot of things to deal with and I have constantly talked to Dr. Johnson. But these are administrative procedures we have. We, we have control over the administrator. We do policies, we do not do procedures. That's the administration. And then we also try to be good stewards of the money given by the three different governmental agencies. Though, that is the limit, other than giving advice of what we can and cannot do. I, I think it's very important that we're in the schools. And I gave up a full-time job during my first year in office to go and went to a 49% job so I could spend, and I probably spent more time, especially since I've been chair, I spent at least 30 hours a week on school board business. And I am not sitting in a desk anywhere. I don't have a desk at Central Office. None of us at school board do. We're all private citizens and we're all going around the community trying to do the very best that we can. And I don't go to just District Nine. I've been in the Magnet Schools, I've been in Howard School where my friend Chris Earls is just now leaving and going to South Carolina. I've been in Brainerd, I had been in Woodmore and it was quite often, I was in Woodmore within 15 minutes after that horrible wreck. And I'm going to tell you what, you may say it's unmanly, I cried when I got on there and I saw what happened to those children that were the same age as my grandchildren. I cried. I care.
Um, like I said before, I think you are a great school board member, but I feel like you, I feel like you, you say those things, but when I was at Central, you got elected my sophomore year. And the first time that I ever saw you before was at Senior Day, my sophomore year. And for those who don't know what Senior Day is, that's the day we recognize our seniors. Uh, we have this big ceremony to represent, um, Central's heritage. And that was my first time meeting you on one of the biggest days of Central, uh, history. So I'm not saying that you're not going around to the schools, but it's just hard to believe when someone who's so involved with their school at the, you know, at the time, I've nev- I've never saw you until those days. And then, of course, when I got on the school board as a student representative, we had a better relationship, but it's hard to believe that. And then the last thing, and I'm going to pass it on, is how effective are these polls that you take? How effective are they? I know you say you take them and you reach out, but just how effective are they? Because it's really hard for you to figure out a time to figure out how something's happening through a poll.
Mr. Highlander, you have the opportunity for a rebuttal.
Uh, studying government, random polls on both sides of the, of the district are the most effective way I can do it. I've had community meetings. Usually I have them in Smith Elementary because it's in the center of the district between Udoa and Harrison. I've had several meetings there. And I'm sorry you didn't see me, DeAndre, I, when I was in the schools, but I was already coming in those schools. You can ask Mr. King, you know, your former principal. I was regular, I have made, have happened not to have been in your class, but I've gone in classes, I've gone through the buildings time and time again. And, uh, you know, I have been there is all I know to say. If you want to check within the administrators, they'll tell you I've been there. I, I have not tried to disrupt classes. I've not said, hey, I want to, you stop the learning process so I can talk to your students, but I asked for permission first to go in and, and co-teach or, or, or ask questions or say you have questions to me. I've done that multiple times at elementary schools, at middle schools and at high schools. And, and I think I've been a very, very active board member. I'm, I'm sorry that I didn't happen to go in your class, but, but I promise you, I've been there. God is my witness, I've been there.
For the sake of time, we're going to finish up with one question. There's a total of four and they're all very appropriate, uh, but I think this one really kind of will, will encompass everything. Uh, for both of you, what do people in District Nine, in your opinion, want from their school board representative? Um, DeAndre, you've talked a lot about change and a lot about new blood. Uh, what specifically do you think that the people, um, that you'll be represented, that you will be a representative of are wanting?
Um, I think they're wanting someone who's going to make sure that without a doubt that the school board member, if I elected me, is number one is doubt is their students and their students' education and making sure that the teachers are being taken care of and making sure that their voices are actually being heard, not just, yes, I'm listening and then two months later, there's no, no follow-up, no nothing. Um, I think it's time for someone like that to come in and be able to just finally say, I'm here for you guys. I am. I'm not here, I'm not there, I'm here for you all. Um, what was the second part of the question?
Just essentially, what do you feel that, um, that the community is wanting from you as a, as a D nine representative? And also another part of that is, you know, expand a little bit about what your current knowledge is, you as well, Mr. Highlander, what your current knowledge is of, of, uh, the current makings of, of District Nine and how, and how it works.
Um, and I feel, I've, I've heard this from several, uh, community members in the community, so I'm not just saying this at Steve, but they want someone that has a backbone, someone that's not going to vote with the popular group, someone that's not going to say, I don't want to make you mad, so I'm just going to stay out of there, or I'm going to vote with the majority. They want someone who is literally going to say, I don't care if I make you mad, this is not going to help my students, so I'm not doing it. Krista Mosley, or Krista's room, sorry, um, she's a prime example of that. Rhonda Thurman as well. If something's not going to benefit their schools and they don't feel like it's going to benefit them, you will know, you will know. They will poop and holler and they will let people know, this is not going to help my schools. And I'm sorry, I don't want to be up there and try to be the middleman and try to be the peacekeeper. I want what's best for my school. So if I feel like it's not going to benefit Udoa, Central, Hunter, Brown, my school's in my district, then I'm not voting for it. I don't want to say, well, I'm sorry I didn't vote for you because you helped me. No, I'm not there for that. I'm there to make this district the best district it can. Um, like I said earlier, it's, this district is divided enough. I don't need any more divide. When I was going to Central, everyone was like, well, why Udoa gets everything and vice versa, well, why do Central get to do this? You know, it, it has to stop. And the way for it to stop is for someone who's going to get up there and bring us together, unify us. Um, and I've heard that from several people. I've been in the community, I've been talking, I've been trying to figure out, what do you want in your District Nine school board member? Because I want to be that. I don't want to be something that's just going to sit there for the title. I want to be there because I, I want to. Just recently, I found out that they get some kind of salary. I was thinking, we did this for free. I would have did this for free because it's something that I'm passionate about. So that's a little bit about where I'm coming from for that.
Mr. Highlander, same question to you. What in your opinion do the people of District Nine want in their school board representative? And I'd like to have a little expansion on that. What do you feel that they are wanting, uh, differently or in addition to, um, what they have had over the last years, if you've been sitting in that position?
I think the people in the community want a continued effort for the students in the community. And I think I've done that and I want to continue to do that. Uh, I don't know if the implication was that I am, uh, trying to go with the majority. I've not. I've gone against the majority time and again. I do think it's important that we work together. It, you have to count to five to get anything done and you have to work with people. Am I giving up things? No, I'm not. I'm not willing to give things up. I try to be a voice of reason, I try to work with people and I think it's very important that we do. We keep, we need to remember though, that when we talk, that we have those three legal powers that we have and we don't have anything else other than those three powers. I try to work closely with the community, I work with the teachers, I work with the, uh, with the children. And, uh, I, I do live in District Nine and I understand that DeAndre is willing to move into District Nine if you get, if you win the election, is that correct? And so he has got, he has, I will say he's been educated in District Nine and he lives in a border zone, which is close to it and I understand that, but I am in the community and have been for many years and will continue to. And I want to work and I want to work with the people and I think I have been. I've been told by people all over the district that I'm very accessible and I want to be accessible to them. I think it's important that we do. Now, whether or not, whether or not you think I voted correctly, I, I, I commit every major decision to prayer. I, I do ask for random polls, a question whether or not, how effective a random poll is? I think that's about the most effective that you could be. If you, in governmental agencies, a ra- a random poll is the most effective. And I do at least a hundred people. When we have that many, as many voters as we have, we have seven, eight thousand children in this district, we have 11 schools and DeAndre is, is a great heart. I like DeAndre, he is a good young man. When we first talked, he didn't know how many schools were in the district. He said, I said, five or six. And I said, there are 10 plus the adult high school. There are 11 and I've been in all those schools repeatedly, repeatedly, repeatedly. And I've been to P T A meetings, I go to the, the student advisory meetings, I go to the parent advisory and I go to the teacher advisory meetings. And I go everywhere I can. I am a very active school board member. Thank you very much.
A few things. Um, yes, I do not live in District Nine. Um, I've lived on the border of District Nine since, for pretty much most of my life. Um, I can't help that where I live, I'm zoned for all District Nine schools. And as a lot of people understand and know, wherever you go to school is where you build your community and where your connections are built, where you go to church and things like that. So for the most of my life, I have been in District Nine. That's where my friends are, that's where my connections are. So yes, if I do win, I am moving into District Nine so I can be a better representative for this district. And yes, when me and Steve met the first time, I was, um, I wouldn't say back into a corner, but I did have a situation where I was being come at by two different parties. And yes, I was a little scatterbrained and yes, I didn't know what was going on when he was asking me question after question. I get where he was coming from, he had a kind heart for it, but for someone who's going into this industry and having all that going at him at one time in a room with just them versus me, it's kind of hard to think right into that pressure. So that's my defense to that.
That was not my intention. I was trying to be.
Thank you. Um, as we close here, uh, I will have each one of the candidates give a one-minute closing statement and then I will, um, finish with a closing comment myself. Uh, Mr. Highlander, if you'd like to go first, sir?
Thank you. I appreciate DeAndre's youth and his enthusiasm and his character. I think he's a good person. I'll tell you what I appreciate even more is for the last three and a half years, my family, my wife has put up with my going from a full-time job to a part-time. She has put up with my being on the phone, late hours and early morning hours, talking to people and texting people and emailing people and my daughters and my grandchildren and my son-in-law. I have spent many, many time, hours because I want to, because I do have the passion for helping children first and for the people that work with children second, that's the teachers and not just the teachers, but everyone that's involved in the education of a child. It's very important to me. I try to reach out to the community every way I know how, through forums, through random polls, which some people may not like, but historically, they're proven to be an accurate way of gauging what people want in communities. I don't go to the same people. I try to go, the first people you come into, 50 on each side. And I've, I have tried to work for cohesion and working together. Thank you very much.
I just want to say that this has been an uphill battle for me since the time that I pulled my papers until now. I've been asked constantly, aren't you too young? Why are you doing this? Over and over and over. And I feel like every time, I feel like I finally got it going, I get knocked back down. But that's not enough to stop me from doing what I'm going to do in District Nine if I'm elected. I'm going to keep fighting and I'm going to keep trying. And I do want to thank everyone for coming out and I hope that leaving today, you learned a little bit more about me. And I want to thank my family and all the people that came out to support me. I really do appreciate it. It means the world to me. They really do. Um, so yeah, I really hope that August 2nd, you think big and you vote for DeAndre Anderson. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, Mr. Highlander, thank you very much for your contributions and your transparency. Um, I just want to close by saying, um, we've lived in Udoa for a little over 10 years and I understand the importance of people within the community being a part of our education, our children's education. My wife actually, um, founded, uh, the Udoa Harrison Education Foundation or D nine, for those of you who knew her, based upon wanting to make a difference. And I want everyone in here to know that I, I personally appreciate everybody who is in this audience right now. There's a lot of people who yell and scream from the rooftops about wanting change, wanting to make a difference. You guys didn't need to be here tonight. You chose to be here because it's important to you, you have a child, you have a grandchild, you have a friend, you have a student. Uh, it's important to you and I, you know, my wife and I talk about how important it is for us to make a difference. Having elected school board members and officials, it's very important and it's integral to,